Planning board for August 4th. The only item on the agenda is 36 Mulberry requesting three variances. And Michael and I met a week or so ago with Ryan and Ben to talk about this. Here's Joanne.
Hey, hi.
Hi. So I guess the issue is this is a very tiny lot. And you want a pergola which apparently does count, a bathroom and a hot tub. And they're five, seven and seven feet from the back fence because the lot is only 66 feet deep. Well, Brian is starting out. There you go.
Okay, so this is the aerial view. Okay, thank you.
And you can see that it's the pergola is one and the
Okay.
The attached to the house is two and the little tiny three is the hot tub. And they're five, seven and seven feet from the property lot. See the five foot variance or three foot and three foot variance.
So my first question is why isn't the hot tub moved closer to the house? So that it doesn't need a variance.
Is there a reason Dave?
Hmm.
What's there?
There was a reason. There was a reason.
It says you're 22 feet from the house. So why couldn't it be slid up three feet leaving you 19 feet from the house? And then you wouldn't need three variances.
Um, we're just looking at this. I think that 22 feet is from the end of that house to the end of the property.
Oh, okay.
That's what I think the 22 feet is.
But there's apparently sufficient space to be able to, if you want to put a hot tub in, to put it so that it's not within the setback.
How big is the setback? Have to be.
Ten feet.
Ten.
Ten feet.
So we only need to move it back three feet?
That, yeah, that we could do.
All right, so I think Sarah won.
Okay.
Just texted me, can't get growing, gives up.
I understand giving up when it comes to technology.
So is there any reason why you could just go for two variances? Is that, is that three feet back critical to the hot tub?
In a way it is because you're going to have a screen along this side and this side. So that when you're in the hot tub, people can't see you if the screen is right up against it.
But why can't we?
I understand that.
If you move it further close in there, you're sitting in a closet of a hot tub. This is sort of your breathing area.
You want some landscaping around it.
But our responsibility is to protect the integrity of the setbacks.
Right.
Right. Yeah, we're going to have professional landscaping back there. The reason we need a hot tub is because we're going to get rid of the tub in the bathroom and bring up the laundry machines. So sort of like aging at home, if you know what I mean.
Oh, I know what you mean.
Ryan, can you text Fenton the number to dial into?
Sure.
It's not on, huh?
So you would have like a little garden or whatever between the house and the hot tub? So that you don't want the hot tub to be
So Mary, again, the key point is that part of the responsibility is to avoid encroachment into the setback.
Right, right. I understand that. I'm just looking for reasons, reasonable reasons.
It was just, the thought was just that it would be squared off as to where the pump out would be.
It's square.
Right.
Again, it's, it's
Yeah.
If it's moved those three feet closer to the house, then it does not require a variance for that.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Okay.
We'd still have a little breathing room. We can make it look nice.
We are not the deciders.
The dynamic that exists is that the design should be, to the extent possible, made so that there's no variance required at all.
Right, and one is better than two and two is better than three.
We're only making a recommendation to the ZBA. They're going to ask you the same questions as to why can't that hot tub be moved three feet? There seems to be plenty of room.
We'll do that.
Two variances. So they're going to ask the same questions in a week or two when you go before the ZBA. We're only making recommendations. We're not the deciders of this.
Ah ha.
How could the why?
Right.
You're not the decider.
And then my next question is, is there a way of making the, number one, the pergola smaller so that it does not encroach on the setback or so that its encroachment is less than what exists currently on your plan?
The thing with that is that backyard is just total sun all the time. And we haven't really, you know, been able to sit it out there. And we thought, well, if we can get a decent sized pergola, we can sit there and maybe even put in more than two chairs, you know?
What is the size of the pergola? What is?
11 by 13.
11 by 13.
And remember that the posts for the pergola aren't at the edges. They're, they're in a little bit.
Right, but the overhang, the
The overhang is 11 by 13, but if you're in a chair, you're pushed up against the post.
Right.
That's why you need that amount of room.
No, I, again, you know, part of the dynamic is the responsibility of the planning board is to try to protect the setbacks.
Right.
And if there's a way of designing this so that it does not encroach on the, into the setback, then that's kind of the responsibility.
Well, I hear what you're saying. Thanks. We have a very small property. You know that. It's
But it's, but it's no smaller than it was when you purchased it.
No, it isn't.
You know, so that, you know, this is, this is a self-created situation. It's not like somebody, you know, shrank your property so that you no longer have the space that you purchased.
Excepting
This is in the rear. Nobody is seeing it.
It has an adjacent property, property owner.
I beg
And property line.
I didn't hear you.
There is an adjacent property to it.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, so it does not exist on, in an island someplace. It is not an island. It is part of, so again, part of our responsibility is to protect those setbacks. Much like if the person to the other side of where you want to get the variance wanted to build something right on their property line.
And what is close to that?
You sent out the map. You sent out parcel access. Did you get that? Ryan, do you have that slide?
Uh, yes, I do.
Um, the house behind us.
Give me one second here.
I can, I can show you a photo if that helps you at all.
Got it.
Ryan sent out a parcel access map. Where, so you can see their property is right in the middle. And there's a backyard from a, what is that, Livingston?
So if the property owner on 547335 wanted to construct something adjacent to the property line, your property line, would that be a problem? In other words, within two feet, three feet of your property line, five feet of your property line?
No.
Not to me.
Um, and, and they've, they've been growing nice roses of Sharon along that
No, 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 I'm not saying what they've been growing, but again, the reason for the setbacks is to provide a separation between development on property or building on property and neighboring properties.
And I would have put a nice swimming pool back there.
Right.
And you certainly want it 10 feet away from the fence to at least give you some pride.
So if they were, if they wanted to put their swimming pool right up to their property line
Yeah.
To the back of your house. You know, again, the concept is to try to provide that separation.
And we just changed the code. It used to be 25 feet rear yard setback. It's only recently been dropped to just 10 feet rear yard setback. You would have been asking for a, you know, a 20 foot variance or something two years ago.
Okay, but, but we're not now and we're in a situation that we have an undersized lot.
Well, no, you have, you have a lot. It's not an undersized lot.
Nonconforming.
It's a lot that you purchased.
Nonconforming lot, yes.
The lot is nonconforming where we would need a variance to do anything. It doesn't matter what we put up. We need a variance.
Right, right, but again, that's part of the condition that you, that you purchased when you purchased the property.
So I'm a little confused here. So is, is this whole process of our coming here asking for relief so that we can stay here and live here and age here? Is that, we're not supposed to be doing that?
No, it's, what you need to do is provide us with some sort of indication or evidence that you can achieve the, the necessary goal and the goal, a goal that is necessary without going into that setback, much like moving the hot tub.
Which we just
Avoid the encroachment in terms of the setback. The question would be, could the bathroom and/or the gazebo be designed or situated so that it does not go into the setback?
So it's a quality of life issue. Is that correct?
It is, it is a quality of life issue for those people and also in the adjacent properties, not just your
I got you. I got you. So would it disturb their quality of life that much if we were given a variance? You're correct. When moved in, that's the way the property is. But that doesn't mean that we can't get, that's why, that's why variances are given.
Right, but they, but again, they need to, there needs to be a prevailing need or interest in terms of doing it that can't be satisfied without the variance.
Well, the need for the bump out for the bathroom, we feel is necessary because we need to bring up the laundry machines in order to be able to live on one story. Which is why I bought this house because it was one story. I don't know what size you're proposing we do a pergola, but I, I wonder like what would we be able to fit under there? Also keeping in mind that there are poles.
I'm also, may I say something?
Sure.
I'm thinking about like myself, aging at home in the age of COVID. I mean, you want to be six plus feet apart. How many people could you actually fit under a pergola? If it's tiny, tiny, right?
Correct.
I mean, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about the amount of time I spend at home now. And most of us do, I don't know, it's, it's like a different time now. And I could see the pergola from post to post is how far?
So, so let me interrupt again in terms of, then do we do away with setbacks altogether?
No.
No, they have a right to ask for a variance. And they have a right to go to the zoning board and ask for a variance.
Right.
We have to do is, as a board, suggest ways in which you can have a better shot at getting that variance if we think it's necessary or justifiable. Let me ask a couple of questions. Is there a fence there?
Yes.
Yes.
Six foot?
Yes.
Yes.
So there's a six foot fence between you and the neighboring property to the rear.
Yes.
Number two, can you move the pergola closer to the house and even with the bathroom? So one is not closer to the other. That's only two feet.
Oh.
Can we do that? Can, we, we need to look at it. I'm not, I'm not saying we don't want to do it. I'm trying to go back and see how we came up with this. May I just say, I've never been able to do anything with the backyard because right on the property line against the fence was a very, very old beautiful tree that belonged to the neighbor behind me. But giant logs would come down. And when they hit the backyard, they shake the house. One dented a windowsill. One branch hit my husband's motorcycle when he had one. Thank God he doesn't. So I waited a long time and then they finally took the tree down and said, I said, now I can safely go and use my backyard. And, and as Mary said, you know, we're trying to find a little room and relief here with COVID. We live in a small house.
What is the distance from post to post?
Of what?
The pergola.
Oh, from post to post? I have to go
I don't, I don't know.
It says 11 by 13.
That's the
That's the roof.
The ceiling of the pergola. In other words
That's the roof.
Like, right, that would be the roof of
That's from the overhang to overhang.
Correct, correct.
Yes.
Okay.
With the
So back to, back to John's question in terms of if you could, could you slide that pergola so that you needed the seven foot rather than five foot variance?
Oh, well, we, we have one problem. I guess it isn't on this map here. That we have a chimney back there.
You don't want to butt it up against the house.
Oh, so is there a door? How do you get, how do you get into the backyard? This is a solid drawing.
That's right.
The door would be placed in this, where the bathroom pushout is, a door would be there.
Right, right now, the only way into the backyard is going around from the front. Do you, do you see my cursor? Does that?
Yes.
Okay, so the only way is either going around or there is a door on this side of the house.
So that should all be indicated on your plan.
Okay, and, and there will be a door on the end of the bathroom.
It says 11 feet.
Where it's right there.
Yeah.
Some of it says like 30
I don't see your cursor.
No, I don't see your cursor. A 3425, is that where there's a gap there? Is that the door?
3425, oh.
No, that's
Oh, no, that's
That's two and a half inches. That's 34 feet, two and a half inches. No.
That's not a door, that gap in the line.
Yeah.
No, the missing line is just a pencil mark. Sorry.
There's no door there?
Where the number
Let me just say, the way a variance works is they have to, the zoning board is going to have to weigh the benefit to you and what you would like versus the character of the neighborhood and the needs of people around you. So it's in your benefit to try to make the variances as minimal as possible because you have a better chance of getting them adopted. So you can go in with exactly this plan. Alls we do is a recommendation here. You can go to the ZBA and take your chances. And if they say no, you can adjust things and try again. But my, my recommendation is that you try to minimize the variances if possible and eliminate the hot tub if you can. So that you go in with the minimal necessary variance to accomplish what you really need. So that you're as close to 10 feet away as you possibly can and still accomplish your goal. That's all we can ask. We can make a recommendation one way or the other, but
The
Our advice to you is to number one, minimize the variances if you can. And number two, you might want to talk to your neighbor before the ZBA meeting because there's a public hearing and they might come. And it's better to sort of work these things out in advance rather than having the neighbor blindsided. And the way the ZBA often acts is if the neighbor is okay with it, they're more inclined to be okay with it.
Okay, um, the reason for the hot tub is because we won't have a bathtub.
Right, you can have the hot tub, but, but again, pushing it so that it's, it's not within the setback.
We can do that, definitely.
Push that up three feet and take it off. Now you need two variances.
Right.
And if you reshape the pergola so that it's even with the backyard, it minimizes the variances. The backyard setback for number two. That would be my suggestion, but you know, you're, you're free to do what you want. You have every right to go to the ZBA with any request you want.
I mean, it could be 15, 16 feet wide, you know, wider pergola. You have a rectangular table rather than an oval table. And then maybe you push it back a foot. Anything, and you try to bring it in line with the bathroom. You're going for seven and seven. I mean, anything you can do to make it easier for them to say yes is what we're trying to help you with here.
Okay, great.
To make the pergola more rectangular.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
The pergola is a kit. Not that I would put it together, but it's a kit. It comes from a pergola depot in Florida. That's why it's that shape. That, in other words, in our budget and, and very close to the size we would want. That's why the
But they also may be able to come up with a kit that is, is
Maybe they can. I would love their help. The reason we're pushing out the number two, 12 feet, is because that's the length of the boards when you're going to start building. They come in 12 and 16 foot lengths. I wasn't going to go with 16 foot. They come in 12s. So that's why it's, it's 12 feet.
Right, they also come in 10 foot.
Yeah, but 10 foot already means you're going to lose a foot in wall. That's where the existing bathroom is right now. The intention is to remove the existing bathroom, put the machines there and
So how far out does the existing bathroom?
The existing bathroom is in line. Is that, that's the black line that's there.
That's this line.
That's the existing bath. They don't see that.
David does. Thanks, David.
Right.
All right, so the house ends there currently.
Correct.
Okay, so you're not, you're not removing anything on the exterior of the house to situate any of these three things.
No.
Aren't we opening that?
Well, we would be opening, that would be open. We would open up a door there into number two.
No, no, but you're not, you're not taking off an addition or taking off any sort of bump out or just extending a bump out.
No, 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 we're not, right, we're not removing a wall or anything like that. No, no. The foundation would be
So again, the other question would be, and, and this could come up during, during the zoning board of appeals meeting, is the reason why you could not shape the bathroom so that it does not encroach on the setback?
We could. We were left with
And you made it, made it wider instead of deeper.
You know, accepting that today's my birthday. I'm 69 years old, been here 20 years already. And we're going to do a shower where you can push your wheelchair into your shower.
Okay.
That's the plan.
Right, again, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a designer. And, and there are, there are lots of options in terms of the way things can be done.
And those are all valid things to say to the zoning board. I mean, that you're trying to make this wheelchair accessible.
It might be to your advantage to show the interior layout of the bathroom so you, they can visualize that, oh, maybe it can't be changed because you need a shower of this size or you need this place for the washing machine and dryer or whatever. Any information you could provide to give them, like David said, a reason to say yes, might be helpful.
That's great. That's great.
And it is useful to point out during your presentation to the ZBA that you, your garage is already encroaching. So that there's already an encroachment into that yard historically. And this wouldn't aggravate that anymore because it'd be less than the garage. That might play a little bit into the, the argument.
Okay, thank you.
Terrific.
On property.
The whole issue, guys, is that we can't break the law. We can't approve you constructing anything in the setbacks. And so that's why you're here for recommendations from us. Then you go to them and then you have the argument. So we're sort of playing the devil's advocate with you to try to get you to think of what you could do, like move the hot tub three feet and make go two instead of three variances. And what arguments you could use by showing them the internals of the bathroom, explaining about the pergola. If you go with a longer and wider one, 16 foot boards could be a couple of thousand dollars more to build it or something because it's a bigger boards. I don't know, the garage is already there as John said. And that way you have a case ready to try to explain to them the hardship of why you're asking to do this.
Okay, thank you for the suggestions. Yeah.
I have a question. Is it possible to move, number one, the pergola over to the right of number three, the hot tub?
Say that again.
Oh, to switch spaces. This is a bigger space. This is, the side door is on the garage side. There's a front door and the side door is where the number 10 is and the number 14 and a half.
But you're putting in a back door.
No, 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 no. On, on the bathroom we are. The, let me just say, the kitchen, do you, do you see my cursor, anybody? Remember where I said the side door is, which is like on the side where the garage is? And that's where the kitchen is. So, I mean, I would love to have back of the house access to the backyard, but there's just no way we can do it. So I'd like to keep the pergola in the sitting area as close to the kitchen as possible.
See, that's another argument.
That's a good reason.
That's a good reason.
That's a good reason. And honestly, you have children who visit you?
Grandchildren.
Or whatever. But honestly, having a pergola in the time of COVID, you know, you want to be able to have four people sit there, right? Be socially distanced. I mean, that's a reasonable request. Help keep America healthy.
Yeah.
But use all the ammunition you can think of.
Thank you.
Okay.
But you're, you're going for two variances then, number one and number two, five feet and three feet.
Yeah.
And you may want to consider whether or not you can reduce the need for, or how much of a variance you need for either number one or number two by making any sort of adjustments that could be made.
Okay, we'll look into that.
The less that you need to request, the more likely you are to get an approval.
Or if, you know, if, if you go with this and they say, well, could you, and they asked Tim's question. Could you make something a little wider, a little smaller? You have, well, we thought about it and maybe we could do the 16 foot beams and move it wider. You know, so if you have some ammunition.
Well, 10 instead of 12.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the depth, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. It takes a lot of creative work to try to make, you know, it comfortable to live in a small place. We're, we're working with as much as we've got, but boy, I sure would love a back exit onto a patio or something. But, you know.
Where is the door?
Do you see where the number seven is? And there's an arrow pointing to the number two?
The seven?
Seven, on the back, on that, the setback is seven feet
Right.
Underneath the number two, right where that arrow is.
You're going to enter from the bathroom to get into the backyard. Okay.
Well, if you have company, they don't have to walk through the house.
That's true too.
Now, we're trying to make, if, as we're extending the bathroom, we'll put the laundry machines closest to the house and the bathroom part further out. So if people come over and need a bathroom, they don't have to come through the house. That's
Oh, that's clever. Okay, yeah.
The current bathroom is about seven by seven. And Joanne had the sink take away the closet that's in that area and made that, and that's where the sink is. But the current bathroom is very small. And that would become the laundry room.
And you wouldn't want the hot tub between the pergola and the bathroom, right? And if you want a little privacy.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
You have more, you have more space to the south.
Yes.
To be able to drop the, the hot tub back.
Right, and, and this is going to be a two-person hot tub. So I don't want to put it by the pergola and people think they come over and they go in the hot tub.
Yeah.
Right, right. You want, yeah, if you have a hot tub, you want it to be a little private, yeah.
Yeah.
And I can understand wanting a little landscaping around it or whatever.
So we now have a request with the variance one and variance two only.
Correct.
Five feet and three feet.
Yeah.
And does anybody have any other questions? Would you like to make a positive or negative recommendation?
Make a motion for positive recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, and our, our findings are, we're going to put, Joanne, we're going to put this in the minutes too for you.
Okay, and I'll get it. I'm trying to write notes while I'm listening.
This will be in the minutes.
Okay.
What do we want to say? That
Second.
Huh? Yeah. So, Michael made a second.
He seconded it.
I could be seconded it.
Okay.
But maybe some
Findings are that there's already an encroachment by the garage, a more substantial encroachment by the garage. There's a six foot fence for private for privacy on both sides. The neighboring house is well away from this area. The applicant has expressed good reasons for the variances for one and two, and they're going to consider ways to make the variances less than as requested to the planning board.
Such as making the pergola more rectangular, depending on the company and the boards and all that.
Or making an adjustment to the shape of of number two, so that it does not have to encroach as much into the setback.
Okay, no.
So Ryan, now it will be in it will be in the find any any other findings? We're good. Right, so we have a a recommendation and a second. We need a roll call vote for the positive recommendation. John Clark.
One more condition that the house lot is less than the normal house lot, the required house lot in the backyard is is fairly small. So those are all good reasons for the variance. I'm going to hit an eye.
Michael Gee.
Aye.
Mary Quinn.
Aye.
Tim Decker.
A cautionary eye.
David Miller, aye. But good luck before the ZBA.
And tell me, have you ever had to use a lawnmower on that property?
Oh, very little. There's like this much we get down. I get down with a scissor right now.
Yeah, I'm always impressed by the way you've landscaped, like.
You don't have to mow rocks.
Right, love those rocks.
Thank you so much. We do, too.
Yeah, it's just a great landscaping job.
Good luck before the ZBA.
Right, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
We have the June 16 minutes.
Yes, the minutes are.
Oh, you're done with us.
We're done with you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 16, 2020?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Five ayes. Right, there's one issue that's going on that you should be aware of. Apparently.
Do we have two sets of of minutes or just one set?
Yes, yes, there's July 21.
Did we have? I missed that one.
That was the most recent one that John John made a couple of edits on.
And it looked fine when it was done. Maybe there was a little grammar thing.
Spacing issues in terms of, but nothing of.
Right. Do we have a motion to approve the July 16 minutes?
So moved.
Yeah.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, apparently, now, a couple of months ago, when the Brogan Center was being discussed, I suggested to the real estate broker, why do you not tell Father Prophet to apply for a demolition permit and come to the planning board and see how they would feel about demolishing the Brogan Center? At least then you would know you do or do not have the option of tearing down the building. And she said, we don't have anybody who wants to buy this right now and do that to it. Well, John Marvin wants to have a discussion. He's representing MESH, who apparently has some backers to build, I guess, half a dozen houses. But right now, that's irrelevant because we're back to the same issue. Marvin wants to talk to two of us. I think now, I don't know where Ryan is with that. Maybe, I think it was at Friday at 2 o'clock.
Friday at 2, I'm available. And and you said you were available, David, right?
I'm available. Is that what we said, Ryan, or?
That's where one email chain was left at, yes.
Yeah, I'm not available Friday.
Only be two people.
Okay.
Otherwise, we break the law. So.
We don't want to do that.
And all we can substantially talk about is you have to come to the planning board in two weeks and file a demolition permit because we can't talk about six houses when you have a historic building sitting on the land. So they didn't do it months ago, and now they would have to begin the process. I know John Marvin wants to talk about, well, could we have some houses? Would you guys have? We, I mean, John Clark drew up a diagram with, I think, four houses and recycling the back half of the Brogan Center. But I don't know what their plans are, but if the plans are that they want to put half a dozen houses there, like, um, what's his name? Cacerino wanted to. They have to come before us for demolition permit and justify why the Brogan Center should be turned, you know, torn down.
So who cares what happens there?
Right. So I I am available. I want John Marvin wants me, Fenton, and I don't know if John Clark or Tim Decker.
I'm I'm available at two. I'm.
I'm available anytime, but at at the 11 o'clock time. I have 11 to 12 appointment up in Red Hook.
Well, there can only be two of us. Ryan, did we agree on at 2 o'clock's a good time?
It was left open day. I I just need to now contact John Marvin and find out if that works for his schedule.
All right. And and so I don't know which one of the two of you would want to, what would want to be the second person?
Flip a coin.
Not flip a coin.
I already put together a some a drawing document to provide at least an alternative for them to think about.
I don't see. I I don't think that we should be presenting them with alternatives. I think that that it's up to them to present to us that we should not be designing for or planning for them.
We've had this discussion for years about us doing their design work instead of having them do it.
I'm not doing the design work. I'm trying to put together something that would fit within existing zoning law.
I would call it brainstorming. I think.
It's not brains. It's not brainstorming, though. What it comes down to is there are specific parameters in which they have to function.
Right.
Right.
Right. But the more ideas that are thrown out, the better, I always think.
Okay, so 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 again, one of the dynamics is is that there is no direct connection between a demolition permit and what is constructed afterwards. They are they are succinct process.
If they say they want to build some kind of houses.
Sure about that.
You look at the design right now.
You look at the code, there's no connection between what's being being put in and the ability to demolish something in the historic district.
Right.
Well, there is the secret law, which says you can't segment actions.
And 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 the secret law doesn't come into play until we get a proposal for the development.
Yeah, but once we have a proposal for the development, then both demolition and construction could be considered one part of one action.
Well.
If he comes before, we haven't seen anything. If he says we want to put up six houses like Cacerino, and it's all legal because there's, you know, enough footage on the property to put six houses, maybe four facing the church and two facing South Street. It's it's very deep on South Street. Okay, but we're not ready to talk about that yet because you can't. You have a historic building sitting on the property. So you got to talk about the first part. What are you going to do about a demolition permit? And if you don't want to take something like John Clark's concept of like trying to recycle part of the old building, the historic part, but anyway, then we can't talk about anything else until we have, you know.
They need to present a case in terms of why that building cannot be used within the existing zoning code and and fit within the existing zoning code.
We've done it twice.
Which is reasonably obvious based upon the size and what's permitted at that site.
Two family house.
As obvious to me, but yes.
Well, all you have to do, John, is read the code and the code very specifically. Now, if you want to go through the process in terms of changing the zoning code for that particular area, that's a whole different dynamic.
Well, what I suggested in that drawing that I did is that there's two options that I think are consistent with the zoning code. One is to make it into a two family house.
And they would explain to us why they 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 couldn't do that. Okay? And the other one was.
They could or could not do it. In order to to get a demolition permit, I think they'd have to justify why they couldn't do that because that's allowed in the residential district.
Right, okay.
And the other option would be, and this is, I'm not sure of, I was hoping Fenton would be here tonight so that we could talk about it, whether townhouses are allowed in the residential district.
That that's multi-family housing.
I don't think so.
If they're connected, they're multi-family housing. That was that was what was determined when when we did the code.
No. Definition says, the definition says of a townhouse dwelling, a one family dwelling attached in a row of at least three such units.
Well, they don't catch.
Then it becomes multi-family housing.
You have 20 foot, you have 20 foot lots. You could, it'd be like Locust Grove. You'd put up six houses on a piece of land. They're not connected. They're not attached townhouses. They'd be 20 foot wide lots. And there's room for like four facing the church and two on South Street. So it'd be just a development. It'd come for what lot line adjustments, whatever, and divide the property into six building units and six properties.
So it is a two family rather than a townhouse.
Two family.
That is permitted in the residential district.
Right, and.
And the question is, can you have an accessory dwelling unit for a two family house?
And I think the answer is has historically been no.
That'd be.
That's the question I wanted to ask Fenton.
Yeah, that that would be, yeah. We can discuss that at the whenever this conference call comes. It's just a very preliminary call, and I don't know what they want to do. Maybe they're not not interested in they they want to.
Yes, I would suggest.
Point is, if, first of all, I think we have to determine whether we think the school building.
Yes.
Is an historic building.
Now, we had a big fight over 37 South Street and a big fight over the police station. We had three to two votes on both of those demolition permits. So and one of them, 37 South Street, was it would cost $200,000 to stabilize the building before we even began constructing and expanding, which would make it cost prohibitive. So financial hardship was their justification. And the police station was just, I don't know, that was just the police station.
That was a state of complete.
Oh, yeah.
That was that they didn't really bother asking us. But the question is, as I remembered on the form, it's not listed as a contributing building, but it's in the historic district. And because 40 years has passed since that form was filled out, maybe it is considered a historic building now, or at least a contributing building to the historic district. And I wanted to know what people thought about that. Is this considered a historic building or not?
I I don't know. Not not the cinder block front. The building behind it is, you know, it's it's an old building. I mean, it was part of a, it was, you know, the school and stuff. It was, you know. I don't know, but I don't want to take a vote tonight. We haven't been asked about.
This is a discussion because if indeed we consider it a historic building, a contributing building to the historic district, then we should try to come up with scenarios whereby we can keep that building and protect it.
My opinion.
There's no architectural significance to the building.
I don't I don't agree with that.
Well, okay, you don't have to agree. But I I would suggest there's no architectural significance to the building that would support it being classified as contributing to the historic character of the community. Now.
I disagree with that. I'm with John.
It may have some historic character based upon its prior use as a school.
I agree with that.
Cultural as the cultural aspect of its existence.
Yeah. I would like to.
It doesn't have to be a high style architectural piece. It just has to contribute be old enough and contribute to the historic district, not be in conflict with the historic district. And I agree that I think having the cultural legacy of that building is important to save, but that's my opinion.
Would it be wrong? Can I say something? Would it be wrong to have people like Nancy Kelly and Mike Fraser give you their two cents on the building? Or is that not their purview?
Well, that's why we have a public hearing.
We'd have a public hearing.
Okay.
You know the address to that building? Is it South Street, Mulberry Street? What's the address to that building?
East Market Street.
East Market.
I think it's 94, 96 East Market Street.
I think the town might have changed it to South Street, Tim.
96 East Market Street. Is that the Brogan Center? No, that's a house. What, I wish I knew the address of it.
And maybe it was created for 911 purposes.
They changed the the name. They called them and Senior Joy Plaza. At one point, that was up there. I don't know if it's still there.
I don't know. I got to look at.
He's one gone. He had a nice dog, so.
Well, we have to make some determinations. I printed up something about this parcel mapping. I look for my house. I'll get the address of it across the street. Owner, Miller.
If you actually look at on the website for the real estate, it should have the address.
And I'm just looking at my house, then I can get the name across the street. And.
You know the number of your house, David?
Yes, I do. And so now I just have to identify the property and it's called called Six Mulberry.
Okay, so they changed it.
Is its address. So Six Mulberry Archives of the Village Historic District. Search for Six Mulberry. Six M U L B E Y. And that, oh, well, we, I don't know, we have, what? It doesn't come up as Six Mulberry. Well, I have to research this. I I don't think, I don't know, was it Six Mulberry in 1979?
Probably not.
Probably not. I don't know. It's going to be hard to find it, what 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 was said about it.
The address for the for when it was a high school, it was it was addressed off of East Market Street.
Yeah. Well, that ain't it now.
Right.
So I don't know what it's called. I can't I can't find it. I gotta find I gotta find you guys again.
I think we looked at it before, and as I remember, it was not considered a contributing building at that time because it was relatively new from 1979.
But but it would stay a non-contributing building until some determination is made in terms of of.
Yeah, that's a that's a Six Mulberry, and that's not what we know. It's not on the listed on the historic register. Maybe that's the South Street address, maybe.
It didn't have a South. It would have had an East Market Street address if it had anything.
So what building is, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not finding anything.
Open PDF. Oh, there you go. Good, Ryan. Buckley School. Now, keep going down to the next page. What did she say about 1931?
No.
Modern intrusion.
David, you got postcards that show pictures of that section that are dated in the teens and 20s.
I know. That's that's she's wrong on that. That that building is at least 100 years old.
Right, but the part that burned burned in the third in the 30s.
So which part? What's the cinder block part? That's obviously.
The cinder block was put up in the 50s.
And so 1931 is the back part or?
Is is the.
Maybe it's a gym.
Gymnasium part and the and the, yeah, the back part, the largest part of it.
So it's 100.
The dark gray is is a cinder block addition.
And the building is from the 30s.
Or earlier. I have postcards from.
Right, that the the light gray part is earlier, as is the white roofed part. They were all part of the high school that and that part didn't totally burn.
Right, I I have, Michael's right, I have postcards from the zeros or the or the teens at least.
It also shows the light gray part with a different roof line.
Right, it looks a little.
Well, I have an old phone book here. It says, Good Shepherd Religious Education is. Well, I have an old phone book here. It says Good Shepherd Religious Education is Three Mulberry. And is, so is Good Shepherd Church is Three Mulberry.
Well, we found it. Ri- Ryan found it, so.
Oh, okay.
But Marilyn's off on that. It's earlier than that. Um, I have postcards that are earlier than that. So I don't know. This building's like a hundred years old and is it, it doesn't belong in the. You know, it's not a residential thing in the residential district. It's, but I don't know. I, i- it's going to be a big debate about, about if we're called upon to rule on a demolition permit, it's going to be a big debate.
My opinion at this point is that knowing the architectural construction, how well built it is. I'm not in favor of demolition of the, the brick part that you see from Mulberry. The, the fifties cinder block, I could, I could vote for that. The only thing that is in there is two classrooms and the boilers, but the older brick part, it's, it's. It's built like a brick shithouses, they said.
It could be restored. I, I, you know, I don't know. So, so the question is.
Could it be restored in keeping with the, what's permitted in that district?
Yeah, they might not want to, but it could.
It could be, sure.
Well, and were that to happen, I would suggest that the Catholic Church would not be able to. Get the money that they want because the cost of doing it as a two family house. Um, would be. Far too great.
Well, not, not if you consider demolition costs perhaps.
Right, and, and John had, you know, I think John had four houses plus that building. So, you know, it would be like six entities. And if you could sell six things, then you probably could make your money. I, but I, this is all speculation. We, we have to, so we have to, I just want to have a little.
That's why you need a proposal from.
Yes.
Applicant rather than.
Speculation from us.
Right, and, and us designing something for them.
So.
That the zoning code does provide the.
Layout.
Necessary parameters.
The parameters of what the zoning code would allow on that property.
Right.
Is it, is it better for the two of you to speak? We only have two people. If you guys have opposing views and want to. Get at it. I, you wanted me, but I mean. Maybe the two of you could speak with John and John.
Well, they're going to come to us anyway, so if, if Tim feels strongly about it, I'll bow out. And, uh, you can just let him know that. I have, I have feelings, strong feelings that that building should be saved. Uh, and they're going to have to try to convince me otherwise.
And, and apparently Mike Gee has strong.
Yep, I'm with you, John.
And I would agree with Mike and John as far as trying.
I have a hard time knocking down another historic building in the village when it could be restored. There, you know.
I agree, I agree.
They've done senior housing, artist housing. They've done.
Right, but again, you have to consider what's allowed.
Right, two families all is allowed.
Right, so, so then it's whether or not the applicant. Um, wants to petition the village board for some sort of, of. Um, amendment to the zoning that would allow for. Some feasible use of that structure.
Is that spot zoning?
I don't, I don't know. But, but it would be up to them to make a proposal for the. Uh, village board to. Address unless the village board wants to on its own make some sort of determination.
I had made that suggestion long ago when it first came up, that there's various overlay districts that you could put in place. That they would be allowed to do that on that one single parcel. But nobody ever bought into it, so I figured they must have tried that with the village board and didn't get any positive feeling.
So, so the other piece to it again, as I mentioned before, is. I would suggest at a public hearing, there probably will be some emotional. Um, input from the community, particularly the older Rhinebeck community that attended.
Sure.
The Buckley School. When it was the Buckley School and then when it was the middle school. So, so that, that may also have an impact in terms of what the village board is willing to do in terms of considering. Other options.
I went on the Realtors website. Uh, and looked at what documents they had in there and they had floor plans in there as well as, uh, photographs in the interior and everything. And I think the thing actually lays out pretty well for a, a large scale. Two family townhouse type arrangement. So that, um, I think it's feasible to, to divide up that rooms, those rooms into two. Really nice living arrangements that would be unique and, and, uh.
Is that including the gym?
Somebody who really wants that sort of, uh.
About the gym, you tear down the gym?
Well, I suggested that you could make the gym into either a garage or a home office, or you could make the, you know, because remember it'd be divided in half. Between the two sides. So it'd be cut in half already and then you could say, put a garage. Behind the, the main building and then behind that have a home office separate from the house. For instance, and that would be allowed under the law, or an artist studio, or, you know, all sorts of op. People would want a lot of space.
But the dynamic would be that given what the church wants for the piece of property. Whether somebody could, could actually feasibly. Do what you're suggesting. Economically.
And I, I think it's still easier to retrofit a building than to tear it down and start from scratch, but.
Well.
But, you know, uh.
I'm not.
Who can argue against that.
Right.
It would be lead paint, asbestos. I, I don't know what the cost of, uh.
But they would have to deal with that either way.
Right.
Um, the other thing that was on the website that surprised me is that that building is on the septic system. So I don't know if they're going to extend the sewer system out. I don't know where the last sewer line is in that.
It ends at CVS.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
More than likely, they have to have enough space for each lot to have a septic system. Because that's a long way to run a sewer system to come out. So. Those minimum eight thousand square foot lots might not be enough to have a source, a septic system. I'm not sure.
Is that they've been trying to get.
The soil in the, in that part of the village is such that, uh.
Yeah.
Probably good, yeah.
Have a shot at it. It would just be. The situating of, of the houses would be tricky.
They haven't figured out a way to get it from CBS to Town and Village Hall, throwing another block as a whole.
Oh, they can get it there. It's just they don't want it. It's an extraordinarily expensive.
Yeah.
About, the last I heard, it would be about four hundred dollars a foot. For just the trunk line.
Under Market Street.
So that means we have, we have to at least raise the septic, uh, septic field issue with anybody who's going to try to subdivide up that lot.
Right.
Because they definitely lay it out such that the health department would approve it as well as to be able to get a decent sized house on it.
Right.
And we also have to deal with, with, because it's on a state road, whatever curb cut would be necessary on. Um, East Market Street.
I don't think you'd want that.
Yeah.
You gotta really back out on.
You'll probably have the curb cuts on, on Mulberry.
Right, well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying in terms of we'd have to deal with. With those other issues.
Can't back out onto Market Street. That'd be a death.
Yes, frontage on Market is only a hundred feet, so you can't get two sixty foot frontages there. Now, it's more likely that you're going to have the frontage on Mulberry.
Well, you could have one with frontage on East Market Street and the corner lot.
Has to be a way to turn around or big enough to come out forward.
The other thing that, that kind of, uh, is, is in the back of my mind is the neighbor to the. West.
Yes.
Right.
Um. It is going, going to be interesting to deal with, with this. Um, and maybe some of the other neighbors.
Our street neighbors are going to have issues with this too.
Right.
You know, it's a lot of big construction jobs. So anyway, I just wanted to get a little, explain what's happening and a little bit of a feeling. Ryan, if it's going to be me and Tim, then offer him two o'clock or, uh, I, I'm free next Tuesday. Um, if you want to try for next week, but you know, if Tim's good at two o'clock on Friday, I'm good at two o'clock on Friday.
Yes, I'll contact the attorney and, and find out if, if it works for, for him as well.
All right, or, or I could do probably next Tuesday for a Zoom without any problem.
Yeah, I could do next Tuesday.
I'll have that as a backup.
Right.
And, uh, it's not going to be easy. So anybody have any other questions, comments?
We don't have, have Mr. Fenton here, so we can't ask him about. The status of things. I, I saw that there, they took up the sidewalk on one oh eight East Market Street. So it looks like they're, they're getting ready to put a new sidewalk in.
And a front entrance.
Well, but we still haven't seen anything in terms of.
Nope. Uh. Ask it Friday. But no, I haven't seen anything about a final plan. And you said that the side. Doesn't look like it did on the plans. As I haven't seen those plans in a long time. I don't have them. I don't know what the approved plans look like, but you said that, that bump out, that they window like bump out is different than it was on the plans.
The one on, on the driveway side?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, I, I don't think it was.
We never saw that.
We, we did not see it that way. It was, it was more. Within the keeping of the architecture of the overall building than what was constructed.
So we need to see plans and they're going to have to come in for an amended site plan or something because I, I.
Ri- Ryan, do you have, have access to those, the, the elevations?
John Fenton has the only co- copy, uh, we have in the office. It's on his.
Wonder if we can get scanned copies of, of the elevations.
Um, I can, I can look back.
Northeast and west sides.
Sure, I can look back. Um, now is this what was initially submitted? Uh, uh, last year back in twenty nineteen or the, or the, or the as built, right, like right now?
Should be what was approved.
What was approved in twenty nineteen.
Because the as built don't work unless we approve them.
Yes, and I don't know what, I don't remember what the front door is supposed to look like, but certainly not two pieces of two by four. It's not supposed to be the front steps to walk in the building, so it must be something, um, that we approved. I don't remember what it was.
Yes, I'll look back and see what Warren, um. I'll look back in my file for, for that address.
Right, thank you, Ryan.
Then, then we could, we could each. Kind of get some more perspective in terms of how it looks compared to how it was supposed to look. Because I know Mike Gee had had some, had made a suggestion that I thought that they were supposed to incorporate in terms of the, uh, fascia.
Yeah, they had some really nice crown molding that was in good condition. I said that had to be put back.
Right.
And on the historic survey, it says it has a nicely detailed molded cornice and it's not there now.
And I got a quick look at Neil Larson's new reevaluation of the old historic district. And it says the building is a contributing building built in eighteen oh two. So I don't quite know what, what to make of that, but.
Well, it became non-contributing when it was, was modified.
Modified?
Beyond modified.
Beyond.
Well, no.
The Bryan Smith Hotel. There's nothing left.
When they put the, uh, shingle siding on it and, and did some of the things that they did to it.
Right.
Didn't Neil look at the Buckley School?
I. Where.
You should check that out just to see what, if he had an opinion on that and it's in writing, it'd be helpful.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, uh.
I didn't realize he went and re, re- looked at the existing historic district.
He did. He reevaluated the four hundred houses and said, said my house was built in eighteen sixty or something. So that's wrong too. I don't, I don't know. I, I, I have also, he put out a summary.
You have a nice barn though, David. A house kind of eh, but the barn is.
Yeah, I don't know where.
So, so one other thing on the Buckley, Buckley School that, that we, we need to kind of balance off is, is that that existing fencing. And that large parking area. Are, are both distract, detractions within the residential district.
Yes.
So, so there, there's certainly a benefit in terms of something happening there that eliminates. That chain link fencing and that large parking area.
Yeah, digging that up.
Want to encourage something to happen there. We just don't want them to tear down the building in the process.
Well, or. If we do, they do it in such a way that it, that it. You know, again, I'm, I'm not, I don't, I don't know if, if there's any feasible way of, of converting it into a viable two family. You know, that the, whether the economics would work in terms of doing that. But that's, that's up to them to figure out.
Yeah.
Are there grants to be had for doing something like that? If somebody purchased the property and were able to preserve something so historical?
I, I would hope not, given the need for grants to pay for lots of other things that, that particularly COVID related. That might be the more important use of tax dollars in, in.
There's tax credits available for commercial redevelopment. Uh, and I, I thought that there was for residential development, but it has to be over a certain amount of size to make it worthwhile.
Right.
Possible, I don't know. I think Neil Larson didn't, uh, during that discussion with the ship, oh. Didn't they talk about, uh, tax credits for residential, uh, records?
Yes, they got flyers. I sent you those flyers. Um. I'm trying to find, I don't know.
It's not huge dollars though.
Well, I think it's respectively enough to make a difference, but. It's a lot of paperwork, so that's why usually you have to have a big enough project to make it worth all the trouble.
Right, and again, if you, if you look at what the, the. Church is hoping to get out of the property. Um. That's, that's probably the biggest impediment in terms of, of something happening there that fits within. The existing code and allows for saving the building.
Right.
But.
I have one additional item. Uh, I saw in my email, uh. The proposed nine room hotel. They have sent, uh, electronic revisions. Um, I, uh, with the hopes of getting on the, uh, August eighteenth meeting. Um, the last time they were in front of the board, there was discussion of a public hearing. Uh, at the following meeting. They didn't make the deadline for any of those meetings. Uh, does the board feel, uh, to honor that, to have a public meet, uh, hea- hearing on the eight, eight, eighteenth? Or, uh, to see what the revisions are and have them wait until September for the public.
Would want to see the revisions at this point.
Okay.
I'm okay with the public hearing myself. And you can always continue the public hearing.
Yeah.
I just need to know because of the, uh, ten day. No, 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 notification to the neighbors.
I mean, some of it depends on what the revisions are, how, how. Significant those revisions are.
Yeah, my guess is that they had. Well, we, we will have to see. You said you had them, Ryan?
Yes, I saw them. They're in my in, they're in my inbox. I haven't had a chance to look at them. I will circulate them at the conclusion of, of this.
I guess I just think it sometimes can be really awkward to. Have that public hearing while we're learning about what's being presented. That, that it often is better for us to know what's being presented.
Well, if they're not substantial revisions, then I'd say we have a public hearing. So maybe David could look at them tomorrow. Decide whether he thinks they're substantial or not, or whether they're just changes in moldings and, you know, depth of cornice and some of the other things we had. And they're substantially the change and we voted to have a public hearing at the next meeting. So I think we ought to honor that unless they, they have rethought the whole concept.
I just wanted to be prepared in anticipation of, uh, the, uh, attorney and her, her request, so.
Well, so, just scan them, send them out to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
So we can, uh, no, I think I could, yes, I can get a comment one person at a time without breaking the law. But, but you know, if they're not substantial, we'll go. And if they're total substantial, we should have a chance to talk to them about it before we go to the public hearing. Well, okay.
I agree.
Very good.
All right, anything else?
Make your motion to adjourn.
I'll second all those in favor.
Aye.
Michael, enjoy your vacation.
Yes, watch out for those sharks.
Yeah.